Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair of Gears. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing in all trustees in favor for approving the agenda as written, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up are to approve the minutes of the special board meeting on February 6th. Is there a motion to approve those minutes as written? Moved by trustee Wake, second by vice chair Walker Andrews. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing in all trustees in favor of approving those minutes of February 6th, please indicate yes by raising your hand. You, trustee Davy? Okay, sorry. Is there a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 11th, 2025? Moved by trustee Davy, second by trustee Wake. Any public comment? Seeing then, all trustees in favor of approving those minutes from February 11th, 2025, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is public comment. Public comment is a portion of the meeting set aside for the public to address the board as the body. It is not time for board response or for the public to ask questions. Do not infringe on right of privacy of others. Please sign in and spell your first and last name. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The chair or acting chair may interrupt or terminate an individual speaker if the statements are out of order or over three minutes or personally directed to an individual. Any public comment?
Hello. First of all, thank you for your time. It's an honor to be in front of a group of educators like yourselves. My name is Shawna Yellow Kidney. That's S-H-A-U-N-A-Y-E-L-L-O-W space K-I-D-N-E-Y. And the reason I'm here today is to address some deficits in the curriculum that I'm noticing with my own students for lack of... The first thing that I would like to see addressed is the language component for Native American, American Indian languages in the classroom. And that's basically it. This is the first time I've been to one of these meetings, so she probably just responded or went over what the response mechanism is, but that's why I'm here today. So, thank you for whatever help can be given, and I'm new to this process, so please forgive my ignorance. But thank you all for your help in following this through to completion.
All right, thank you. You can go ahead and turn off. The board does not respond to public comment? All right, next up is item six, which are reports and announcements. And next up are announcements from superintendent Hill.
All right, buckle up. Long list. Starting off, Governor Jean Forte is visiting Missoula County Public Schools tomorrow. He is going to be touring three of our schools: Russell, our Blue Ribbon Elementary School, Washington Middle School, and Sentinel High School. And he is here in support of the Career and Tech Ed Month for education. So, obviously, a lot of things happening on the legislative level in support of education, and so we're excited to host and showcase some of the best and brightest of NCPS. So, we're looking forward to that. There is a school site visit to Chief Charlo, and Benny will be leading that. He's the guy with no hair today. And that's Thursday at 9:00 a.m. And the reason why Benny's leading is because Amy and I are going to be at Seeley Swan High School interviewing for principal positions. So, staff and community will be engaged, so we'll be up there for the whole day interviewing candidates. Budget and Levy Committee is on Friday at noon, right here in this room, and that will be another engaging experience with Pat. So, thank you, Pat. Also, coming up for some of us this, in the next couple of weeks, we are going to... MCPS, in conjunction with local law enforcement, is going to be attending a gang training. Not... Oops, sorry. That's me. That is not for us to know how to be in a gang, but to know what signs to look for. And it's just another component of our overall school safety plans. I will also be judging the Battle of the Books at Porter next week, so I did that last year. It was a great time had by all, and they also give me food, so it's an extra bonus. Believe it or not, daylight savings time is 12 days away, so I know we're moving towards spring. I think that's what the weather's indicating right now. Knock on wood. And then I also, tomorrow will be... I'd been invited to sit at a roundtable discussion with the University of Montana and South Porter and talk about education and our continued partnerships and how we are key players in educating Montana's youth. And so, looking forward to that conversation. And I could go on and on about legislative updates. Some are positive in my eyes, some not so much. It's really hectic right now. Almost feels like a little bit more than any one person can keep up with. So, for those trustees that are helping to advocate and send letters, I know Arlene, Jenny in particular, doing a great job of doing that, and so I feel like her voice is being heard in that realm. So, those are my updates. Oh, no, actually, I have one more. And this one's kind of special, but our very own board chair, Walina, has been selected as one of, as the first and only representative from Montana to be selected as a fellow for the School Board Partners National Fellowship. And she'll be joining 75 other elected school board members from across the country. Yes, that is worthy of a round of applause. So, super excited to have her voice in a national organization as she looks to build her leadership skills and governance and just helping guide the direction of our district overall. So, congratulations, Walina. We're excited for you.
Thank you. I'm super excited. It's with the School Board Partners, so if you guys Google that, you guys can see what that's all about. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. We will have two motions to approve the consent agenda items. Is there a motion to approve the elementary consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Walsh, second by trustee Witt. There is no board discussion. Is there a public comment on this agenda item? Seeing then, all elementary trustees in favor for approving the consent agenda, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the high school consent agenda items? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Davy. There is no board discussion. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing then, all trustees in favor for approving the high school consent agenda item, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is item eight, new business. First up is to approve the classified probationary release report, and this is over to you, Mr. Lebowski.
Yep, thank you. These are very standard. They're typically embedded within the personnel report, but because we don't have a personnel report during this meeting, and we need to get it done before the end of the probation period, you're seeing those as standouts, but they're a standard part of our process.
Any trustee questions for Ms. Lebowski? Seeing then, there'll be two motions, an elementary motion and a high school. Is there a motion by elementary trustee to approve the recommendation? Moved by trustee Walsh, second by vice chair of Gears. Are there any final comments from a trustee? Any public comments on this item? All elementary trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all elementary trustees present. Is there a motion to approve the high school recommendation? Moved by trustee Wake, second by trustee Davy. Any final trustee comments? Any public comment? All trustees in favor for approving the recommendation, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Next up is the, to approve the Atlanta Falcons' Arthur M. Blank Foundation grant application, and this is over to Assistant Superintendent Shattuck.
And I'm going to turn it over to two of our activity directors, Nick Latch and Josh Johnish. Go ahead.
Thanks for bringing up the presentation. Hi, I'm Nick Latch. I'm the activities director at Hellgate High School.
And I'm Josh Johnish, the activities director at Sentinel High School.
And yeah, we're here to talk about a pretty neat opportunity to add girls' flag football. If you go ahead and go to the next slide. Does that video work if you click on it? That was going to be really fun. That's a, that's kind of a fun video that shows, that highlights girls' flag football as it's already happening in Montana. If you go to the next slide, you may have seen it, you may have heard of girls' flag football. It's currently sanctioned right now in 13 states. There are pilot programs in 20 states, and Montana is one of those states where the pilot program is currently happening. If you watched the Super Bowl, you might have seen a commercial for girls' flag football. It's getting some pretty national interest right now. It'll be in the 2028 Olympics. It's a, NCAA has recognized it as an emerging sport. The NFHS, the National Federation of High Schools, which is our governing body for rules for our sports, is coming out with a set of rules for girls' flag football later this year. And in Montana, this will be the fourth year that it's been recognized by the Montana High School Association as an emerging sport. Last year, 17 Montana high schools participated in girls' flag football, and all of this has been made possible by the Arthur M. Blank Family Foundation. Arthur Blank is the owner of the Atlanta Falcons and has had, has a special interest in Montana and bringing girls' flag football to Montana. So, the three schools, we sent out a survey earlier in the, earlier in the winter, and this was a response of a number of students, of female athletes that would be interested in joining a girls' flag football team. And that's something that, over the last three years, as people have seen girls' flag football in Montana, this is the first year where I've started to hear from, from parents and students within my own community that they're interested in forming a team. And I can let Josh speak a little bit about what he's heard at Sentinel.
Yeah, similar. This is, it started coming in maybe a little bit last year, but definitely this year it started more and more interest about when we were going to possibly start something like that, and it's just kind of built. I think I had an initial student walk around with a piece of paper and a pen, and she may have gotten 20 names back in November. And so, when we sent out the official survey, we ended up with about 52 students. And my, you know, I, it will come up here in a little bit. One of the concerns is, well, does that take away from all of your other girls' sports? And we found that actually, most of the 52, around like 80%, did not do a fall sport. And so, that is something that was intriguing for us as well, is getting more and more students active and being engaged.
Jack Young, C.R.C., from Big Sky High School.
Hi, sorry we're late. We had a senior night pep band, girls' basketball, cheer and dance, so just running from one event to the next. But I don't know what these two gentlemen had spoke about, but, you know, we did a survey, and we had, you know, over 36 interested females and the same sentiment that, I don't think it's going to take away from our fall sports that are currently participating. And we have space on campus to have practice. We have coaches potentially interested, so we are excited about the potential for this in the future.
And if you're wondering, girls' flag football is seven-on-seven, and so a team size of 25 is definitely plenty to go ahead and have a team. We have enough interest from students to make it happen. Like I said, it's all made possible by, by, by the Arthur M. Blank Family Foundation. So, they're offering a three-year grant of $45,000 per school phased in over three years, with $20,000 in the first year, $15,000 the second year, $10,000 the third year, to help sustain the program. If you go to the next slide, this is a pretty, a pretty, I think, conservative budget when you factor in of what we might, you know, look at for an annual cost, with transportation being roughly $10,000. But I think that, when I say that's, I think that's pretty high, considering that, you know, we would be able to share transportation needs across our three schools. The format for, for girls' flag football is often jamboree style, where you'll have six teams all meet at a common site. And so, it'd be the three of us traveling to Kalispell, for example, to play Glacier and Flathead, and Columbia Falls, something like that, where we'd each get two games that day, and then I'll come back to Missoula. So, if we're looking at, you know, a $10,000 budget per school with sharing transportation, it'll be well under that. Coach stipends, officials and game workers, equipment and gear, those are all the main costs, and the costs are pretty, are pretty low when you're considering, you know, you're looking at flags, wristbands, cones, ball markers, those types of things, not, not very high cost. And then these are some of the questions that you might be wondering. And so, Jack talked a little bit about some, some of the responses to these questions. I'll let Josh kind of weigh in on that third question, because I think that's probably one that y'all may be wondering, is, is there any impact on Title IX?
Yeah, so I was, you know, curious, looking at the numbers, and for, one of the bigger pieces is making sure that you have equal ratios of girls in your school, boys and girls in school, and that matches kind of what you have in your activities. And so, it was interesting, because I went through and, and kind of, before we added any sort of flag football girl numbers, our total population was 56, I'm sorry, 60% girl, no, 56 girls, 56% boys, sorry, 44% girls in terms of our activity participation. The overall demographics of our school were 60-40. And so, that, looking at that, when I added the 50 girls or so that would be interested in participating, it actually puts it right on, on track, almost exactly to the percentage of the same ratio. You know, so overall, it would improve our, our numbers in terms of the participation. I don't know if you guys have anything? We kind of touched on adding, you know, I don't, I don't see it impacting other girls' sports. We've talked with quite a few different activity directors, and there's a multitude of different ways that you can handle that. There are some schools that are, are having girls that participate in both sports, so if they're a volleyball player and they, and, so working around or working with, a lot of those are the smaller schools, but I don't see it having an, you know, huge impact. Our volleyball, we had to cut, I think, 22 girls this year, and we already have five, five full teams. And soccer, I think we had to cut maybe 10 girls. And so, hopefully, that's some of those girls that are coming out for that sport, but also we have the, the winter sports athletes and the spring sports athletes that don't do anything in the fall. So, this would hopefully bring them in and get them more active.
That's what I noticed on my survey data at Hellgate, is a lot of the students that are interested in participating in flag football are not currently participating in a sport in the fall, which is when flag football will be offered. Starting in August, it's a six- or seven-week season that goes from August 15th to October 4th, so, you know, relatively short season, about this, actually exactly the same length as the golf season. I think that maybe leaves the last question, is what happens at the end of the three-year grant? And that could be something for us to discuss if you do approve it at a, at a future meeting down the road. I do know that the Atlanta Falcons have, have said repeatedly over the last four years at our meetings that, you know, their support doesn't go away after the three years. They're committed to making girls' flag football happen. They've, they are currently, you know, coming to Missoula every year and doing girls' flag football camps for, for girls, training, trainings for coaches, trainings for officials. They're bringing athletic directors from Montana down to Georgia to see how they do girls' flag football in Georgia, which the way, I mean, they play it in the Mercedes-Benz, the Atlanta Falcons, like NFL football stadium, is where they play the, the girls' flag football state championship games. And it's pretty incredible when I heard the A.D. from Lockwood High School explain what he saw. So, they're committed to seeing this through and are going to be our partner with it, I think, pretty much indefinitely.
And also, Mike from Lockwood kind of gave an update today, and he was talking about how the actual costs for, what he's seeing for the actual costs are less than the three-year grant, and so there is some rollover money with that that will help extend some of that, that grant money. And in piggybacking on that, the Atlanta Falcons representatives have talked about, if money is an issue to keep this thing going, please reach out, because they're more than willing to, they really are invested in seeing this sport grow across the nation.
I'll go ahead and open up to questions for any trustee. I have a question. Was Seeley Swan incorporated into any of this?
You know, I haven't had any conversations with Shawna about it, no. That's a good question.
One of the, the challenges for Seeley is just population. They have 85 students. They currently are pulling eighth graders in to play volleyball, and I'm not sure that adding this would be advantageous for them with their other activity programs, something that they can certainly consider, but it may not be something that's entirely feasible.
I have another question. This is to apply for the grant. It's not, so if we, are we adding, are we proven to add it, are we proven to apply for the grant? Clarification.
I think you're, you're doing both. Applying for the grant is, and if we're successful, which every indicator would suggest that we would be successful, then we would be adding girls' flag football as a pilot sport under Montana High School Association.
Vice Chair Walker Andrews.
Mine's also related to the Seeley Swan situation. Should a girl from Seeley Swan want to join a team at one of the high, is that a possibility? I mean, it's, there's problems with distance and all of that, but is that something someone can do, especially since it's 7-on-7?
I'm going to say, I would have to ask the executive director of the Montana High School Association what they would, what they would say, yeah.
Trustee Mercer.
The other school, yes, I'll state the concern, I would rather not drive to Billings. Like what, where are these schools? What would the play schedule look like? How much school would be missed?
So, there is like a fast-moving, expanding group of schools. I think, looking at, you know, as a, an example, Kalispel Glacier and Flathead, they, I believe, travel, they have a, maybe one or two home, they go to Butte, they would love to come to, obviously, Missoula. It's a six- or seven-week season in those sites, so it wouldn't be traveling to Billings. There's enough schools that are locally around. The one area, depending on what the state championship and, and those types of things look like, that would be your one travel. Right now, there are some games that happen during the week, but a majority, if not all of them, that weekend schedule would be on a Saturday, so that it wouldn't be any extended school departments.
Yeah, and in Mike's update, the A.D. at Lockwood, who's sort of leading the charge on girls' flag football in the state, said, looking that we're increasing from 17 schools to 32 schools, which then would lead me to the assumption that we would have more local opportunities in the area. I think in addition to, I think Hamilton is one of the participating schools, too, so we've got a local partner there, too.
And St. Ignatius.
St. Ignatius, East Alana.
And East Alana, East Alana is another one. And Butte.
So, it's across divisions, double As, As?
Absolutely, yeah. I think Absorkey has a team as well.
Trustee Davy.
Hi, I'm wondering if the budget you provided us is total cost to the district each year or if it's per school?
That's, that's per school.
Okay. So, based on that, the first year, it looks like you'd have about a $2,000 surplus, but the second year it goes to negative $3,000. And so, assuming some rollover, it puts us about $1,000 in the hole, which, you know, I mean, I know this is a conservative budget, but the third year, we would be negative $8,000. Where would you expect that money to come from?
I would say if we're, if we're consolidating our transportation, I mean, we're looking, I think our transportation is probably $3,000 per school instead of 10, if, if we're sharing it. Like $10,000, when we share it, we're $3,300 would be my guess. So, then we're looking at a $9,000 carryover.
Okay. If we did not feel like this was enough money to do the program, would you be able to go back to the Arthur M. Blank Family Foundation and ask for $20,000 per year for the next three years?
I'd be willing to ask.
For the initial three, these three, first three years?
Yeah, to make sure it was covered.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can ask, yeah. Part of the, there'll be less equipment costs for year two and year three. We'll be able to use the same equipment. That first year, we're obviously buying a new set, you know, sets of belts and wristbands and things like that. So, in the future, we won't have to do that as much.
Any other trustee questions? Seeing then, this is a high school motion. Is there a motion to approve the submission of the grant application? Moved by vice chair of Gears, second by trustee Wake. Any final trustee comments? I have a comment. I'm super excited. I've heard good things about this. I have relatives that go to Lockwood, so they really enjoyed their season, so I'm glad for the girls here. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing then, all trustees in favor for approving the submission of the grant application, please indicate yes by raising your hand. Unanimous to all trustees present. Good luck. Next up is, yeah. Next up is item nine, which is the work session, and this is information only, so I'll go ahead and turn this over to superintendent Hill.
Yes, thank you, trustees. As we talked a little bit at our board retreat, coming up with a variety of topics that trustees had expressed interest in, this was one that came up early, even before the board retreat, and is just part of, I think, our overall sharing of data and information related to what we're referring to as our systems of support, but it's really a broad range of services, programs, initiatives, right down to the nuts and bolts of our, our school safety. And I have a team here tonight that really does the lion's share of this work. And I have a team here tonight that really does the lion's share of this work. And Assistant Superintendent Benny Jamona is going to lead the conversation tonight. But also with us are Barbara Frank, Erica Zins, and Burley McWilliams, who also have play roles in our district across these multiple areas. And so we're excited to share a lot of what's going on. This is by no means exhaustive in terms of, of the information that we're sharing and certainly expect that there to be questions and would, at least I would allow for interruptions in the flow of the presentation, to ask a question when it, when it's right there in front of you. I think Benny would agree. Yeah, it looks like he's, he's concurring. So with that, I'm just, I'm going to turn it over to Benny and looking forward to hearing more. Thank you.
Thanks Superintendent Hill and on cue taking my thunder and my initial welcome to the trustees. So it's nice to be here tonight. Thank you all for allowing us to have a conversation around the systems and what it looks like across MCPS. I also want to acknowledge trustee Hayes. She shared a list of questions that she had for tonight. Obviously, she can't be here, so we'll make sure to embed her questions into the presentation and then I'll follow up with her at a later time as well. So you'll remember in the fall, we had a conversation around, you know, what the academics and demographics of MCPS. This presentation will mirror a little bit of what that looked like. And as Superintendent Hill said, if you have questions, if you want to intervene, if you need clarification on something, please feel free to ask. So really, this is a snapshot of what it looks like today. If we did this presentation five years ago, if we do it in five years from now, it's probably going to look different. It's just the nature of the business. It's the nature of what we do. It's the changing needs of students, of families, and we take a lot of pride in being flexible and adaptive to address the various needs that our families have. So as we go through this, we'll talk about the 30,000-foot view, what the systems look like, but under the assumption and understanding that these, these systems are fluid and we try to work really hard with our building administrators, with our educators, in trying to get feedback and the reality of what's happening out there and what we can do on our end and our district role to support all staff. Next slide, please.
This is me, so hello, everyone. So one of the things that we work on in the district in academics is teacher clarity, but we try to model that teacher clarity work across all of the different things that we do. So sharing with you today is learning intentions and success criteria, which is something that we ask teachers to do when planning lessons. And so we expect ourselves to model that when we're planning as well. So tonight, we're hoping that as we go through this presentation, that you will learn about the systems and programs that we have in place now or are looking to in the future for, that provide protective factors for our students and families. The relevance of this is that MC, MCPS systems of support are essential components of a healthy and strong education system. And we hope that you'll feel successful and be able to explain tonight how we approach a tiered system for whole child wellness. I hope that you'll be able to explain how we collaborate with community partners to provide our systems of support. And I hope that you'll be able to name at least three MCPS systems of support. So be ready for the quiz tonight. It's your exit ticket and you can't leave till you get it all right. So pay really close attention tonight as we go through the presentation.
Thanks for that, Barbara. I think one other piece that's really important and for us to honor is, this isn't meant to be, you know, presented that we're not aware of challenges that exist in our district. We're not trying to paint a perfect picture or say that we don't have challenges, that we don't have hard situations, that we don't have challenges for our students. And that's not the intent of our group tonight. It's to be better. It's to always continue to improve. It's what we can do as a board and, and as a cabinet to, to address the needs of students. So please take that as kind of a foundational concept as we, as we go through. So the agenda tonight, the MCPS student demographics, this was shared again in the fall, but really, we'll give you a brief snapshot here in a few slides, just so you understand some of the opportunities and challenges that we have right now. We'll talk about the risks and protective, protective factors that we are experiencing as a district and how those help guide our leadership and response. Our tiered systems of support, what those look like between tier one all the way up to tier three and what that language means. Our community partners, you all are community members. You are, you are well-adverse to the amazing resources and people in our community and we really try to leverage that to help address the needs of our students. And we'll give some examples of what that looks like. Prevention and intervention, we talk a lot about trying not to be a reactive district. The more that we can be preventative, the more that we can prepare and the more that we can prevent, it allows us to build more sustainable and consistent systems moving forward. School climate, you all had the fortunate presentation of Ms. Frank a few weeks ago. She talked about the, the graduate profile, shared some of that, that climate and survey concept, and we'll share a little bit more about that today. And then as Superintendent Hill alluded to, just our school safety in general, what does that look like at a thousand, at a 30,000-foot view? What are the areas that we're focusing on as a district?
So we wanted to just center our presentation on the core purpose of our district, so I'll just give you a second to read that. And as we look into, we can go on to the next slide, which takes that and puts it into our, our four core values as a district. So we are student-centered, we're focused on safety for all of our stakeholders, we're focused on equity and innovation. And so when we are planning and looking to make improvements as a school district, we always keep those core values at the center.
Oh, the MCPS demographics, so these are some of the data points that we discuss. Like we talked about, challenges and opportunities for our students and our families. You can see some of the data that we shared in the fall. We have total students right now, 9,224, give or take. We just had a spring count and Pat McKeel will correct me if that's wrong. We have free and reduced lunch. We have our percentages there that you can see. Students with IEPs and 504s, English language learners, homeless, unoccupied, unaccompanied, wow, unaccompanied youth, and then chronically absent students. We gave that as a snapshot just as, as an example of some of the challenges our students and families face and how important it is for us to develop those consistent systems to help support. Yes, trustee?
I just, when it says chronically absent students, 37%, so that's 3,000-plus individual students. And then what's the definition of chronically absent?
It's a great question. So the Department of Education would say any students that miss 10% or more of school could be identified as chronically absent. And I think it's important to note that that's just not unexcused, that's excused absences as well.
Does it differentiate much, secondary versus elementary?
We looked at it last fall and I thought consistently K-5 has our highest attendance and then it drops. Most K-5 schools are probably somewhere between 90 and 95%. And then you see a little dip in middle school, 88 to 90%. And then high school, I'm guessing, is probably even a little bit lower.
A little bit low, a little bit lower, a little bit worse?
Yes, correct.
So that's bad, right? Like, like in the realm of like relativity?
Yep, yep. And one of the pieces, trustee Mercer, I think we're working on, and Erica Zins, who are, who is our phenomenal student services, TOSA, one of the things, one of the projects that she's been working on this year is developing an attendance response to our chronic, to our students that are chronically absent and developing some systems and some community supports and some different barometers that we can track and try to connect with them. We've had some great community partners that have wanted to engage with us in that and trying to find different avenues to have outreach, to have home visits, assessing with families, what are your needs, what are the barriers to getting to school? And we hope over time, we're going to pilot that with a grade band and hope to see some benefit over the next year and then try to, to leverage that and build it, much like we did with our crisis response team.
Does this number include early literacy?
Yes.
You said K-5.
EL 5, sorry.
Okay, just double checking.
Yep, you got me, yes.
Oh, trustee Walsh.
You might not have this stat at your fingertips, but do we have a percentage of like gifted students? I know the threshold is so high for that, but...
Yep. When we identified it in the fall, I think the national average was around 5% and we were close to that, 5% or 6% depending.
Yep, and if any trustee has any questions, just feel free to jump in as this is the work session part of the board meeting, so it's not as called upon, so formal. I just wanted to, this is my slide, but I wanted to say one thing about the chronic absenteeism. When we have looked at it school by school, oftentimes our schools was the highest chronic absenteeism, especially in the elementary schools, our non-title schools where families take lots of vacations or they're taking their kiddos on exploration kinds of adventures. And so sometimes chronic absenteeism pops up at schools and it looks like they have a high percentage, but sometimes the factors vary depending on the school what's causing those. And so when we look at potential risk factors, these are just some of the risk factors that our kiddos are facing and our families across our district, from poor nutrition to limited access to early childhood learning, all the way over to unaddressed medical needs or supporting their siblings and families with medical or financial needs. And when you look at this, if I have one risk factor, it's just, my umbrella is going to hold up. But as students begin to compile more and more risk factors in their lives, it really becomes a delusion that, that, that umbrella might not be enough to keep them protected. And so we're really trying as a district to differentiate and provide tiered supports to families, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that, to provide protective factors for families that will, will mediate these different risk factors our families are facing.
This is my slide. So we put a list together of protective factors that are in our district. And as you look through them, you can see on one side, we have our MCPS supports and then our community supports that work with us. And I'll just run through them quick and if you have questions, please ask. We have a family resource center or a families in transition specialist in every building. Those are, are specialists who work with our students who are homeless or in foster care. And also, they do a lot of work with our at-res students too. It's not just that one population. We have, well, I'm the student services TOSA, and we have behavior interventionists at all of our EL 5 schools, and we also call them behavior interventionists at our middle school.
What is a TOSA?
Oh, that's a great question. It's a teacher on special assignments. That's a great question. And we have social workers at our high schools, so they just have different names at the different levels. And we utilize two different curriculums, Character Strong and Leader in Me at the EL through eighth grade to support standards. So we use pieces of those whole child development curriculums to support the standards we already have in place. We have school counselors in every building, talked about the social workers, and we have our two learning labs, which we started last year for middle school. And we've had a learning lab in place for a while at the high school level and instituted our middle school one last year and it, it's been fantastic. And it's a, it's a transitional lab when students are struggling to, either when they're coming from a community support or somewhere else and they need a slow transition in, back into school because they've been at treatment or whatever, or they need a reset from what's ever happening, whatever is going on for them. And so we utilize that a lot and it's been great. We had great success, I oversaw it last year, and so we had really good success with students who were really struggling in school utilizing the learning lab and, and having time to reset and, and actually building a different plan for them back in school where they were more productive. So those learning labs have been great. And at the high school level, we utilize their learning labs a lot for our students who are coming out of JDC, coming out of treatment, coming out of, maybe, maybe it's the end of the semester and they're coming from another school and they, you know, two more weeks left. So there's really lots of different reasons why students utilize it. And it's just, it's been great and the teacher that we've had there has been great, so we've been, had really great success with that. And the last MCPS support we had thought of was I Love You Guys, which Burley will talk about in a little bit. It's our structured training around safety language for our staff. And one thing that trustee Hayes had asked a question about, and I'm glad she brought it up and we didn't put on this slide, was our tip line, which they'll also talk about later on in, in our, in our presentation. And then some of our many community supports, which have just been, I, you know, being in this position, the, this is my third year in this position, and I really feel like it's unbelievable how much our community supports our schools and wants us, wants our students to be successful. And so you can see a lot of that through Missoula Parks and Rec with their play specialists and after-school programs. Boys and, Boys and Girls Club, we work with them for after-school programs. We have, we partner with the Missoula Food Bank to have pantry and snacks, started at Lowell and we now have it at Franklin and Russell also, so we're growing that. Our CSCT teams, which we have at all of our middle school and high school and one of our elementary. We have school-based health services through Partnership Health Center. And we've partnered with the University of Montana with the Montana Happiness Project. They have either come and presented at our summit or offered free or very reduced classes for our teachers, which actually led into, they, because teachers took the Montana Happiness Project, it led into free counseling for any staff member that wanted free individual or group counseling on campus. So it led into some more supports for our staff, which was wonderful. We have a work-based learning partner.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
So I do know that they're, they are at Washington Middle School. Are they at any other schools besides Washington Middle School? Because I know the PTA paid for that, for this Washington Middle School.
I'm sorry, for the CS...
The happiness project?
Oh, the money, yeah. Not in a whole school in a sense. Only, Washington's the only school that has brought it in. Everyone else has gone to, so they just have offered it to all staff and staff have chosen to take it or not. Washington's the only one that I know of that has brought it into their school. And they have, they offer not only OPI credits for it, but they offer tuition or credits through a reduced, like three credits for $95 for teachers who take this project course. So it's been great. And they've gotten grants to be able to do that for us too, so.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
So to me, going back to that one, social worker to me is a term of licensure. Do you mean it as a term of licensure? And if so, why at high school and not at elementary? Can you speak to that?
We have licensed social workers at all levels. We just have them different, they're just different names. Because when, during COVID, when we had our SR funds, we titled those positions behavior interventionists. So those are social workers or we have one school counselor in that position. So school counselors or social workers in the behavior interventionist positions. And high school has typically always had a social work, well, they've always had a social worker, they just added additional ones.
And then can you talk a bit, no enough to be dangerous, so CST was the sort of Medicaid-funded and then we used to have it in elementaries and we went away from it and then there was state? Can you just kind of give more like what's happening there?
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. With CSCT, we were lucky to have all programs in, I think, every school. And then ever since COVID, lots of different things have happened. One of the things that happened was our state took CSCT out of Department of Health and Human, Health and Human Services and put it in OPI. And when that happened, the way they funded CSCT was changed. And how that affected CSCT programs is that we, they could not serve students the same way. So they could only see, basically, they could see students less time in the day because of how they had to bill than what they could in the previous, under the previous billing model. Thank you. So that was part of the problem. The other part of the problem was after COVID and during COVID, they had a hard time filling positions. So we had lots of teams that had one person or no people. And then Western Montana also went under restructuring, and they're still restructuring, so that they cut a lot of their teams just because of their restructuring and new leadership. So three different factors.
And another piece to that, Cohen, is if you remember through COVID and S.R., one of the areas that we identified was the behavioral, behavioral interventionist. And one of the reasons... And one of the reasons they were deemed so important by us as a district administrators, teachers, staff, was their ability to be fluid and work between a student that's a tier one and a tier three. What Erica's alluding to, a lot of times there were very tight parameters around who and what students could work with a CSCT therapist or specialist. And so that flexibility was one of the reasons. And you remember last year when we were focused so much on the levy conversation, the safety levy, our conversations in our levy and budget committee was around that position. So we have all of our EL eights have a behavioral interventionist. And then we've been pretty selective on which groups can or would need maybe a CSCT team. And part of that is to what Erica alluded to, it's hard to fill the positions for them. They would love, I think, to provide more too, but they're just having a tough time hiring as well.
So, and just make that lay, like it requires a diagnosis, right? Because it's medical billing, is that basically?
That's correct.
So that has problems attached to it. And so, but is it then sort of static now where it is in the high school? I mean, is it like, it has shrunk from where it was?
Correct.
Four years ago. Is it now sort of in a holding, like this is how it is for you guys?
And we've had, we've had willing partners and they've been able to staff. Some of it has been our internal conversations as a team and looking at, we know our EL eights have interventionists there, our high schools with the safety levy not passing. There was definitely a need there. So we were selective in making sure that our high schools had CSCT teams. And then part of our relationship with Partnership Health and some other community schools, grants and things like that, we've been able to add a couple of teams as well.
Is Willard staff differently than the other high schools?
I, you want to do that?
Go ahead.
It is. They, they have, Willard's been unique because they've had a Partnership Health Center social worker there longer than any of our schools. And so they've always had that support. They also have a full-time social worker on top of that, our district social worker, and a full-time school counselor. And in the past, they've also used some funding to do half family resource specialist, half social worker in that position. So they, yeah, they're structured a little bit differently.
And the last piece to that is in the general fund, high schools do have a social worker, but then that operates different than CSCT.
I guess just as you're going along, one of the things I think we approved last time was to put a placeholder, high school safety levy. And so in addition to what you have, like what are the gaps that that would look to fill as just we go along?
I think just in general, the need for staffing, right? There's more need. We've seen more need come out of COVID. And so, you know, our tier numbers of two and three students would support having additional staff. And so while we're grateful for what we have, if we were able to pass a safety levy and provide more services, you know, accessibility, I think that would be huge for high schools.
I'm sorry, and I can shut up. But can you, tier one, two, three, what does that mean in lay terms?
It's coming.
We'll go over the next slide.
Here we are. I can talk about it at this next slide.
Thank you, Cohen, for hitting that mark in great segue. Thank you. You nailed it.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious how APHA fits into this and if that's part of the learning labs?
It is not part of the learning labs. Do you want to speak about AP?
Oh, you mean, oh, APHP? Oh, sure. So that's separate from us and it's inpatient at St. Pat's. And so we work with them. So if they have some of our students there, we'll supply schoolwork, but it's a totally separate from our, that's a great question.
But the learning lab might be the place they land when they come back.
Correct.
So that's, that can be that transitional place to help us so we don't just drop a kiddo right back into a regular class schedule. We'll start in a learning lab to give them kind of that slow start back to school. I also just wanted to point out on the last slide, when we were talking about social workers, one of the things that we have is school-based health services through Partnership Health Center. And so that provides additional social workers. So trustee Mercer, to your question about like gaps that we're trying to fill, one thing that an elementary principal recently told me is that with the addition of the Partnership Health social worker in their school, it allows their counselor to do some more of that tier one proactive work and not always be in a reactive mode. I mean, our real goal is to provide safe learning environments that are conducive and welcoming for all students. And so if we can really start to shift from always being in that reactive mode and needing social workers and needing CSCT, to start allowing some of these protective MCPS supports to do more of that general proactive work, we can maybe start to tip the scales. And so I think that we are getting to a point where we've got a lot of support. We could use a little bit more, but at some of the schools, we're starting to turn the tide and we're starting to see that we have a good safety net in place.
Barbara, real quick, as you jump into the next slide, I want to honor trustee Hayes's question. She had a question about CSCT caseload sizes. They can vary between 15 to 25 depending on the school, high school, the middle school, the K5, EL5, sorry.
And one more thing before we finish. I won't read everything left on this slide, but I would like to point out our youth crisis diversion program, which is worked, it's through Providence and technically we used to call it our crisis mobile unit. And we started with one therapist who would come support students who were really struggling behaviorally in school, whether it was a large escalation or they needed more supports. It was just that extra link outside of school where they could help the family make doctor's appointments or find a therapist and meet them there and engage them in those outside community resources that we aren't able to do. And it's been so successful that they grew it and they added two more positions. So we were, we started at middle school and then we added high school and elementary. And then they got another grant and so they've added three more positions. And so it's all under, so we went back to youth crisis diversion, which is what it started with, with Sandy at part-time and families had to go to her for support and she worked part-time. Well, now they've added another Sandy, which is another therapist that works with families that reach out to them. They added a case manager and they've added an intake specialist who also can come out to our schools. So it's just been awesome.
And a visual for you as trustees, as you think about that position, they respond when a student may be in escalation and the hope is, again, the words we've used a lot tonight, preventative, and get to an escalation and help a student regulate before they potentially would get cited, get asked to leave the school, would have to go through a citation, potentially court. Youth Court and Providence have been our partners in that relationship. And they reported last year that citations for our group and population was down almost 20% from the previous year with these therapists.
Yeah, and Youth Court has been a huge, actually Youth Court's been huge in getting this whole thing going. So they've been awesome. Thanks, Benny, for saying that. Unless anybody else has any other questions?
Ooh, I do.
Okay.
You know, I know this week, I think legislatively we lost summer nutrition funding, like $20 million. Do we, is there a community partner or do we as a district provide summer nutrition? Can anyone speak to what this summer might look like?
I can speak a little bit to it. The funding that they're talking about, I think it was 20 million for Montana, was basically EBT cards for families who participate in summer school nutrition program. So it's like an extra add-on and it's not actually an impact to the meal service that we provide in the summer.
Oh. So just to clarify, we will still have summer nutrition available?
Last I heard.
Fantastic. Okay, great.
Pat, over you.
We, and we have, we just got a flyer from the food bank about theirs over spring break. So hopefully we'll continue, so.
So when we talk about tiered supports, that is one of the systems or structures that we use to organize our supports and how we deploy them to students. You may have, if you're familiar with tiered supports, seen this in a triangular model where the supports kind of sit on top of each other. We've been looking at some research out of UCLA and kind of a different model around multi-tiered systems of support that really looks at it more as a concentric circle. So instead of saying, I'm passing my students to the next tier, we're talking about enveloping them and providing more services in kind of these concentric circles. So tier one is the supports that are provided to all students. There are general education program, there are the supports that are available for all students, the opportunities that are there, the school counselors, those kinds of things, the teachers, everything that's available for all students. The next concentric circle would be, we're getting, the student would be getting all of the tier one and now they're going to get some additional small supports. And so those are the tier two supports. Sometimes I like to think about things like the food banks that we have in school is really a tier two. Technically they're available for all students, but they're accessed by smaller groups of that community. Tiered two groups might be run by counselors who are working on social skills groups with kiddos, teaching students how to play in the elementary school. It might be small group interventions or group therapies that are being provided in a high school or a middle school. And then tier three are those individualized supports. A lot of people will talk about that's where special education is, but there's a lot of other tier three individualized supports. That's where you have CSCT. That's when students are meeting for individual counseling or getting individualized lessons or behavior plans. But those students should also still be receiving tier two and still receiving all of that tier one. And so really when we think about it, instead of kind of pushing kids up through a triangle, we need to really be thinking about how we're really circling around and providing more supports. So this is kind of a different way to look at MTSs and a model that we're shifting towards. Instead of thinking about pushing kids to the next tier, thinking about how we circle in and circle in even more to give kids all of the supports they need. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see some examples of our tiered system of support. So at tier one, these are the things that we provide, like a proficiency-based curriculum, school-wide wellness support, school-wide attendance strategies. They're things that we're doing at the whole school level. At tier two, this is where we start bringing in student support teams. Every one of our school has some kind of a student problem solving or support team. They might call it a student assistance team or a student intervention team. And those teams meet regularly and review student data and identify students who may be at risk or in need of extra support. And then they deploy these different supports at the tier two level that meet the needs of the students that are being problem solved, so to speak. Those can include extra caregiver communication plans, some social interventions, behavior interventions, school-level attendance interventions. And then the tier three, that student assistance team is continuing to meet, but we've realized through data that the tier two systems are not enough and these students need even more. And so that's what tier three really is, is it's even more. And so this is where we're really, we're looking at that data and we're really honing in on exactly what these kiddos or these families need for support. So you're looking at smaller group supports, individualized supports, and individualized plans and communication plans with parents to help meet the needs of those students. And just to reiterate, if they have tier three, they should also have the same, those tier two supports should continue to be in place and they should still be receiving all of those tier one interventions that are available to all students.
Barbara, can I interrupt you for just a second? So I'm thinking back to the demographic slide where we had all the different percentages and the number of kids. Can you tell the board or can someone tell the board, like what percentage would you typically see in a tier three in any given school or a tier two? Obviously tier one is 100%.
Yes. So you would typically, if we were, where you, the research would suggest we should be, you'd see about 5 to 10% of your population receiving the tier three interventions. You'd see about 15%, 15 to 20% of your population receiving tier two. And you would want to see around 70 to 80% of your population that tier one meets all of their needs. And so sometimes if you look at that data, it's a little heavy on the other side where we might have, I think the first slide said, was it 13% special education? So that's a little bit higher than that 5 to 10% we would like to see at that tier three level. And so that's how you kind of assess the health of that system. But what I've always said to teachers as an educational leader is you can't tier two and three your way out of a problem. You really have to focus on those school-wide interventions and make them strong, consistent, predictable and reliable so that you don't need as many tier two and three supports. COVID increased the need for tier two and three and that ballooned our need for those CSCT, behavior interventionist, social workers. But now we are starting to see kind of the waning of that where we are getting supports in place. It could ebb and flow as usual, but we are starting to see us tipping the scales back where maybe that tier one is starting to be more powerful. So that really is one of our goals.
Thanks, Barbara. So just to follow up on that, if we have an elementary school with about 400 students and you said, you know, 5 to 10% in tier three, 15 to 20% in tier two, you're talking about 100 students out of 400 that are needing additional support day to day, sometimes in a one-on-one type setting, sometimes small group. But, and that could be an academic and/or behavioral, because we're not, these tiers aren't just speaking to the behavior. It's also speaking to the academics.
Yeah, that is an excellent point. And what we've listed here are mostly the behavioral side of this, the mental health, the whole child wellness. But we did include in tier one, that proficiency-based curriculum. A highly engaging curriculum is an anecdote to some of our concerns at tier two and three. And so that move to transformational learning and creating opportunities that motivate and engage our students in different ways is really important to the tier two and three supports as well. So academics are a huge part of this, but if, and I think that we do, I think on the agenda somewhere, we've got a work session focused around curriculum and academics on the horizon. And you'll see these tier one, two and three again, but you might see some additional support. So these ones, this is of course not inclusive of everything that we do as a district, but just a snapshot. But the academic component, that engaging, motivating curriculum is essential to healthy school climate.
Can I just clarify what you said about special ed? Is everyone with an IEP or 504 considered tier three?
They would be receiving a tier three intervention because they have an individualized plan.
Okay.
Because, but these are, tier one, two, three is about the service. It's not, it's not the kid. It's not a tier three kid. It's a.
That's a very good point. And that is, that is absolutely a great point.
But in special ed, there are levels of like, isn't there another scale in there? That's part of what confused me.
Yeah, there's a continuum of services in special education. And so when you look at least restrictive environment, some students only need classroom supports, push-in supports, accommodations and modifications. And then that continuum ranges all the way up to students who might need one-on-one aids, individualized plans in separate settings. So there's a full continuum inside of tier three. There's really probably, if you really got down to brass tacks, probably a full continuum inside each of these. But there definitely is a continuum of supports. So a student might need a lot more tier three supports than another student who the tier two and tier one are where they're getting the majority of their support. It is such a good point though to say, these are not tier three students. These are students receiving tier three services. These are not special education students. These are students receiving special education services. So thank you, trustee Mercer, that people-first language is very important.
Yeah, this list leads into, and Barbara had hit on a few of these, but these are our prevention and intervention tiered, what we do for behavioral and whole child development. So at tier one, and I spoke about this before, our whole child curriculum is supported partially through Character Strong and Leader in Me. Our school counselors teach lessons to classrooms. Our school safety committees and our active tabletop drills are tier one. Everybody gets those. Our school screening, so we have a couple of assessments that we do that we, they're called universal screener. So we screen everyone, just like we do in academics. We do, we've been looking for in the past few years, some better assessments, really mental health assessments for students or just are looking at behaviors of students. And so I'll get into that in a second. And we also do regular QPR training for all of our staff. And QPR stands for question, persuade, refer. And it's around suicide and talking about suicide with people who have suicidality. And we do that with our staff regularly. And they have it every two to three years, that training. Some do it every year, depending upon the principals, what they like, but we do it every, most of the do every other year. So, and then our tier two interventions is we have, Barbara talked about our student support teams. We have short-term skill-focused small groups. We have our school-focused teams, like our attendance team, our MERTS team, which is our medical emergency response team. And our school-based health service. And our school-based health services, like PHC, our Families in Transition and Family Resource Centers, and our early literacy classrooms. And then for Tier Three, we have individualized student support plans, learning lab placements, CSCT, and school-based health supports. We have our summer programs, and those look, those are either summer credit recovery for our high school students or our special education summer school or a jump-start program.
So can I ask another question? Because you said, again, these are services at different levels. And you have Tier Three is pretty much an individual level? Okay. And so the early literacy classrooms count as Tier Two just because they're very small?
There would be a small group intervention, so not necessarily an individualized intervention. They're not available to everyone. You have to screen in, so we would call that a Tier Two intervention. I wanted to just add one thing, just kind of circling back to Trustee Walsh's question about students who are gifted. Tier Three also serves students who are gifted, and I feel like we did forget and leave that off of these slides in our focus around protective factors, because that was kind of what we were really focused on. But as you brought that up, and I've been reflecting, Tier Three are supports that we provide for students at any point. So if Tier One's not meeting their needs because they need to be challenged, then we should be providing more Tier Two and Three interventions. So I just wanted to point that out, that Tier Three can also be a proactive intervention, like supporting gifted students or students who have individual, like, leadership goals and needs. So some of our interventions are supporting students in that proactive way. So Tier Three doesn't always have to be a reactive tier.
Where, where do our SROs fall in on these tiers?
I would say they would meet at every tier because they are providing school safety for all students. They provide lessons and supports in all classrooms. Sometimes they're meeting with small groups, and sometimes they're meeting with individuals.
I would say, I would say they try to work really hard, especially to start the school year, to be really visible and approachable and in buildings and having conversations with kids, with families, with administrators. So when those tougher conversations do occur, or they need to be involved in a potential crisis, it's not foreign, they're not a stranger, they're somebody that we feel is an appropriate adult to help support us.
We have a couple of new board members. Are you able to discuss what they're, how they're utilized at each level?
Yeah, so it's a great question. So at the K, at the, I don't know, I haven't done that any night except tonight. You got me, you got me thinking. The EL eight level, we have two rotating SROs, so they're Student Resource Officers. They respond to our 12 middle schools the majority of the time. They'll help support our high schools. Our high schools each have their own SRO in their building. And then Willard would be supported through those various SRO officers as well. Their design is to be able to respond in crisis. They're designed, they're designed to be able to problem-solve with families, with staff, with administrators. We really use them in a variety of ways. I think we have been very fortunate having conversations with other districts, other cities. We have a unique group of SRO officers that are very skilled, they're patient, they're very understanding. They don't overreact, they're very calm. And we have built a really strong relationship with our police department through ongoing PD, conversations that we have with our district safety team, and then having them as really as a support. I would say more often, their response may lead to a positive conversation, a different intervention than just simple citation, removal from school, you know, a referral to another center or to the, or, you know, potentially, you know, juvenile detention center. So a lot of different skills that they provide us that we try to leverage at all of our buildings. Anything that I would have missed there?
Does Willard choose not to think that's a good idea?
No, they, they will take advantage of any SRO that's available at that time. So, yeah, I've seen all three of the high school SROs at one point or another there. But I would say at the high school level, they're an integral part of the team, the administrative team. They go in and teach lessons, they are present at assemblies, they, they're a real positive influence on the student population.
Does that also include the school nurses? Or where do they fall into tiers?
Yep, again, I would think similar, that they could be Tier One, but also they respond to individual students. Our nurses, we don't have a nurse for every school, they're on a rotation. Each nurse will provide support at two or three buildings. And then Brooke Krenniger, who's our student services, our health and student services nurse, lead nurse, she designs that schedule and makes sure that all buildings have general support, and then any of our Tier Three or Tier Two medical kiddos have what they need as well.
So for like the elementaries, I know the front office does a lot for like school nurse duties.
Yeah.
Is that?
Yeah, our front office is probably the assistant principal, the nurse, the backup custodian. Like, their, their skill set is beyond. But they're one that, that helps as well when the nurse may not be there. Our principal, our assistant principals, they wear that as well. They do a lot of medical response, or they'll respond to health concerns as well.
Yep, please, thanks. So I was talking about universal screeners, and this is one of the ones we use, EL through eighth grade. And what it is, is we utilize this so we can look at student, either externalizing or internalizing behaviors students may be presenting. And this survey is completed by a teacher in the classroom, and they go through and they fill out a, they fill out a sheet, and then it ranks if a student is experiencing high externalizing or internalized behaviors, low or middle, or mid, I would say. And what we do is they utilize this just for, to place students in tiers. So if they're having a student who is experiencing high externalizing behaviors, and they have a group and they put them together, then they, they'll work on those specific skills that those students may have. And we do this three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. And we utilize the fall one really to look at grouping or seeing what students may need those Tier Two and Tier Three services. And in the wintertime, we utilize it for that, but we also utilize it to look at our Tier One systems. Are we doing everything we need to do at Tier One in order to keep students mostly in that Tier One system? So we utilize it a couple of different ways. And then in the spring, we utilize it again, that same way. We look at Tier One systems and also Tier Two and Tier Three interventions for students.
So Erica, if we're looking at one of these graphs, and I'll just pick the K2 data on the upper left.
Yep.
And I, I'm looking at this as a layperson, what is that telling me?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, great question, great question. So green is low. So, and how they look at these is, for externalizing behaviors, some of the things they look at are, is the student not telling the truth? Are they cheating? Is there peer rejection? Is there low academic achievement? Is there negative attitude? And the internalizing behaviors could look at, are they emotionally flat? Are they withdrawn? Are they depressed or sad? Are they anxious? Are they lonely? So those are the different things they look at. And if you look at that top left, so that first one, I was trying to look at my thing, is low externalizing behavior. So you can see that my, we, oh, it's almost, it was, I think it was 76% for our K2 was in the low externalizing behaviors. And then our moderate externalizing behaviors, I think it was like 16%. And then the high externalizing behaviors was 11% for our K2. And I just did that, I just combined all three for last year, so you didn't have a whole bunch of different things to look at. But you can see how we utilize this. So if we have, you know, 16% of our students who are moderate, moderate externalizing behaviors, that's just one of the tools we use. We also look at our office discipline referrals. We look at other things going on in the classroom. So this is just one tool we use for universal screening. It's not the be-all, end-all, but.
So does green mean good?
Green is good.
Okay.
Low, low means we're not seeing it. Yes, thanks, thanks. Super said it.
So I had a question as well, because obviously, 70 plus 16 plus 11 plus 75 plus, so is it?
Oh, it looks at it differently. So let's say we had 100 students do this. We look at externalizing behaviors for all 100, and then we look at internalizing behaviors for all 100.
So I guess my question was whether there are students who do both, or is it really two groups?
You could have students do both, and you could have students do just one. Yep, great question.
Do we, do we do this by school, and do we see meaningful patterns?
You know, it's quite interesting, because over the last three years, we do do it by school. I just grouped it all together. You can definitely, schools that have more supports, will have high, you will notice higher externalizing and internalizing behaviors. So it points to those resources being at those places. But they're not as, there's not as a big jump in there, Trustee Mercer, as you would think, so.
Just be blunter. I mean, when parents come in and say, this particular school is in a crisis situation, and it is different than another school, does that or does that not bear out?
I would say there are differences, but they're not great. I would say.
Yeah, I would also add that this is teacher opinion, and thresholds are different as well. So when you talk about different schools, we might not notice a huge difference in the data, but it might be that the threshold for a teacher feeling like that is a behavior that is warranting marking a concerning level on this survey. It varies across schools based on the population they're serving. And so this one is a little bit subjective in terms of assessments that we give. And so we have to always take that little bit with a grain of salt as well. So when Erica says this is just one data point, that's because it is a subjective test and does have some teacher bias to it. So we do use multiple data points when we're looking to pinpoint what needs we want to target for students.
So this says that sixth-grade teachers are very positive, because they are just quite a bit.
I know, isn't it great? That's great, because when I put this up there, I was like, wow, that sixth grade last year was really, or those fifth-grade teachers, you know, when they went into sixth grade. But yeah, you're right, I don't, I don't know what that is.
Well, sixth graders are scared. They're in a new school, and they're, everything's internalized.
That could be a lot of it. So this was one. And then our next slide talks about something that's new to our district. We're, we have partnered with the Rural Behavioral Health Institute, which is actually out of Helena, but they support all, they support hundreds of schools in the state of Montana. And we are using a mental health screener that is a combination of the Columbia Suicide Rate Scale or Screener and a depression screener and an anxiety screener. And it's combined, and it's on the computer. And we started last spring, we actually got this information from Helena. Helena does this in their district, all, they do it sixth through 12th grade, all schools, all grades, is where we first found out about it. And then we looked into it, and there's, I think almost all double As are using it now. But a lot of our small rural schools are doing it, and that's where it originally came from. And so we piloted it, Big Sky and Washington piloted it with certain grades and certain students last year, just to see how it runs. And what it looks like is, students come in and they, we have a, we have a proctor thing, our teachers read. And counselors will go in and support teachers who don't feel comfortable with it. But they take the screener on the, on the computer, and it can last anywhere from three to 10 minutes, depending upon how they answer, it could branch off to more questions. And so what happens is after they take it, we get their information immediately on what's called their dashboard. And so we can look and see if they've scored, they look at three, four different things. If they've scored, if they have had suicide ideation within the last two weeks, if they've had suicide ideation lifetime, which is other than those previous two weeks. And they also look at if they have high anxiety or depression. And so we get that information right away. And then what happens, and I'm going to lead into Trustee Hayes's question that she has here. What happens is after that, RBHI has really, they've been doing this so long, they've got it down. And so they have therapists on staff that will meet with students the same day as any of our students who've had recent suicidality. We have them meet that same day with a therapist. So we have set up times throughout the day where students will meet online with a therapist. And if they don't want to meet online, then they'll meet with one of myself or one of our counselors or social workers in the building. And we've done a lot of teaming around this and a lot of planning before we even start to do this. And what it looks like then is a student will meet with a therapist online, and they'll do a full assessment, and they'll do a safety plan with those students. And then they'll give recommendations and a summary to parents, and recommendations and a safety plan to us and parents. So lots of information. And, and really, their goal too is to keep students out of the ER by doing that assessment and safety planning with them that day. And we've also partnered with Youth Crisis Diversion. So if we do have any recommendations for students that need higher level of care, like our, our emergency room, we'll actually have a youth crisis diversion therapist come and do that at the school instead of at the ER, and then guide them through that process if they do need higher level of care, which makes it less scary, lots of less time in the ER. So it, it's actually been really awesome to have them support us. And so for instance, today, I was at CS Porter, and this was their first day doing it. And we are screening all of their seventh graders right now. And we screened 78 seventh graders today. And out of those 78 seventh graders, we had eight score red, which means they had recent suicidality. Two of those eight are currently seeing a therapist and had therapy appointments today. So out of the eight, six saw a therapist online today. And two of those times, they asked the counselor to sit in with them, their middle school counselor. So they sat in with them during their appointment. They send those summaries and those safety plans to parents right away. And then some of their recommendations could be that they have also, which will answer one of Trustee Hayes's questions about long-term, and after they come in, do they just, are they done after the screener? Well, what happens is, after they do the summary and offer suggestions, another awesome thing about RBHI is that they have what's called their Bridge Care. This is all free because it's grant-funded. And Bridge Care is where they guide the family through next steps. Do you need a therapist? Do you need a psychiatrist? Do you need to see a doctor? How do, do you have those? We can connect you with those. They have a case manager, they have therapists. And what they do is, they either, kind of like youth crisis diversion in a sense, where they guide the student, or they guide the family and the student, find them their resources, and then gently let them go. And also, they, they have just implemented a new care program, I think they call it, it's brand new. Their care, they have another program where if the family cannot find a resource to meet their needs, whether they don't have Medicaid, don't have insurance, and we can't find a therapist in our community to serve that, they will serve the needs of those students through their program until they find somebody local. So they don't ever just drop a family, they support them through until they can find them local resources. So I know that was one of the concerns or questions that Trustee Hayes had, so that answers that. But anyway, so that's kind of the long story of how you do it. But, so this fall, Big Sky actually screens their entire school. So they, they did it last spring. They saw a lot of great success with it. So they did nine through 12 this fall. They rotated it through their, what is their period? Advisories, thank, I can't remember which he, which he's, high school calls them, but advisories. Washington Middle School this year is screening, we've decided we're not going to screen sixth graders because they take things very literal, and this is, sixth grade, we, we still do our SOS, which is our signs of suicide, and we still do our screener through that. And that's what we're going to stick with our sixth graders. But we are with our seventh and eighth graders. Washington decided to screen all of them. We've done all of seventh grade, and now we're starting with all of eighth grade. Tomorrow's our first day of that. And then Meadow Hill is going to, for the, they're going to screen and pilot it this spring. They're going to do all of their eighth grade. And then Hellgate and Sentinel are going to screen and do it through their signs of suicide classes, which is through their health classes. So we'll use this as the screener instead of the screener that comes with that curriculum, because it's much better.
Can I editorialize just a moment?
Please.
Of all the things that we do as a protective intervention, this is probably. one of the most important.
I like it because not only do we identify kids that we don't even realize might be struggling, but there's also just that, that care that is, you don't just get a phone call from us and then what next? The what next is there for them to help them through that. So I appreciate this.
I just wanted to point out that this is also funded by the Arthur Blank Foundation. So when we talked about flag football, that's one thing they fund. They fund the Rural Behavioral Health Initiative and have created this opportunity for the state of Montana as well.
Unless there's questions, I'm done with my slide.
So when we talk about screening and, and problem solving and identifying data, our school climate survey is another point of data that we look at. And so we talked about that at a previous board meeting. And so I've brought back a few more points of data to share with you. So this first one is our student survey. And so you'll see the top in the blue is our elementary and that is second grade and up. Orange is our middle school and green are our high schools. And so you can see these questions that we ask that were common amongst the surveys. There were some different questions at the grade bands, but these were the questions that were common amongst all three areas. So you can see kind of the difference between elementary and middle and high school. This was out of four. So this is the, the, the survey scale is out of four. So you'll see most of them are close to three, but you can see some of that changes as students go from elementary down to high school. And so those are issues right now or data points that our schools are looking at, problem solving around and creating smart goals to approach in their buildings. If you go to the next slide, you'll see this one is our staff survey. Same thing, elementary in the top, middle in the middle and high school at the bottom. So those same survey went to all elementary, middle and high school teachers. And you'll see the numbers up at the top of the staff who responded at each of those levels. And finally, the next slide is the family survey. And so this identifies how families are feeling and you'll see that again, that difference. One thing that we noticed in the surveys, our parents feel really connected to elementary schools and that connection seems to wane as they go along through our system. And so that is something that we're really looking at. We just had a Title I problem solving meeting and we're talking about ways to build family engagement opportunities together. So hosting things at a high school where elementaries are going to our high school and really trying to bridge some of that family engagement. Because it is true, our elementaries do a great job of connecting with families. A lot of our surveys called out our Blue Ribbon School Russell as being a school with their house system that has a really great way of connecting with families. And how can we strand that successful connection? And so we are already having these great conversations across grade bands about how we can grow some of those practices that make students and families feel safe in their elementaries. How can we scale that up? So they have that same feeling of connection and safety in our high schools.
I forgot, is this new or is there like a historical take on this?
So we've been doing climate surveys for as long as I've been here. We were using a survey called Student Voice or My Voice previous to this year. There is a cost associated with that. So we worked with the academic and community services leadership team to write our own survey this year. We shared some of the same questions and then we aligned it to our graduate profile. So when we look at the data, it also informs the different areas of our graduate profile. So we can really start using that to guide our work in our goal setting as well.
So right now, do we know whether kids feel safer or less safe now than four years ago? Or is that not because, we don't because we switched?
We could look at the school safe. We could definitely pull that data and identify.
I may just pull it up because I mean, just to say like 2.5 is like what? I mean, it's like, does this mean that parents are out of touch with their kids? Cause the parents say 3.5 and the students say 2.5? Probably not, right? It's probably just people using different scales. So it seems like the historical one would be more meaningful with the built-in relevance.
Well, and I also think that safety could mean something slightly different to each of those groups, you know, where I might not feel safe with my peers. But when I took this as a parent, I was thinking more about like physical safety and are our school buildings safe? Or a student probably isn't necessarily thinking as much about their building safety. So I also just think too, there's those nuances in how we each define what safety means to us. Go to the next slide. So these just are some of the things that we're doing. So there's that, because it was all aligned to that graduate profile. So these are just some of the things that we're doing around school climate in our buildings. There are lots of different things that we talked about. So you can start to see how these threads build across all of the areas of school safety and those protective factors that we're trying to provide. One of the things I'd like to highlight on this slide are our partnerships. And one of the things that was way back in a slide was something called Play Specialists. I'm not sure if I've talked to you about our Play Specialists yet, but it is one of those partnerships that really builds school culture, especially for our elementary families. So the Play Specialist was an innovation that we came up with Parks and Rec and your fellow trustee Witcher. And what that is, is in partnership with Parks and Rec and through a grant with the Tyson Foundation, we pay for Parks and Rec Play Specialists to start at about 10 AM in our Title I early literacy classroom. So that's in addition to the para that's already required. And those Play Specialists stay through the after school program. So we are able to provide through 21, 21st century funds and some other grant funds, after school programs at all of our Title I schools, except right now we do not have one at Russell that is a free program. And those Play Specialists stay through that free program with the students into the evening. So they have the same expectations, the same person. And so it really provides the safety net for these little four-year-olds that are spending a really long day at school. They get this consistent person that sees what the school day looks like and then supports them into the afternoon. It's a beautiful intervention and something that is innovative and exclusive to MCPS and something that we're really proud of. And that is one example of those innovative partnerships that we try to strike throughout our community to come up with solutions for our families and students that can make them feel safer, make them feel more connected to their schools. So all of these are just different things that we're trying to do. One of the questions on here was how many schools have regular newsletters? I would say the majority of schools have some sort of a newsletter or regular communication. I don't think that we have any schools that don't send some sort of regular communication. You'll see them come from family resource centers sometimes. Those newsletters sometimes come from the principal. So they're not necessarily disseminated the same. But every one of our MCPS schools does provide some sort of regular communication to their school, community and stakeholders.
Okay, we are on the, we are at the home stretch here. At this time, I would like to reintroduce my esteemed colleague, Burley McWilliams, who was excited to be here to hear and listen and brainstorm around the therapeutic resources that we provide and braided systems. This next couple of slides is really the meat and potatoes of what he's done for a decade. And I asked him to be here in case there were any questions or any historical context that the group might have, just around building and district safety. I think the biggest thing for us as a district, about three years ago, when I came on in my role, actually as I was coming out of the COVID director role, one of the areas that I was assigned by the previous superintendents was just our standard response to crisis and what were we doing to be consistent? There seemed to be a lot of inconsistency, struggles with language, really challenges around what did a response look like building to building? Part of that was just the nature and language of our responses. So what we used to have in language and what that looked like was we may have a lockdown or we may have a lock-in, or we may have an evacuation, or we may have a shelter. And a lot of times the lockdown, lock-in really, really presented challenges in communication. I would say trauma for students and staff not knowing what was what, how we were communicating it, what did it look like in the response from law enforcement, first responders? So as we really started to delve into that and try to figure out a system that we felt could be more responsive, predictable, consistent, one of the names or one of the programs that kept coming up was the I Love You Guys program. The program is in 50,000 different districts, schools, agencies, community groups. It's a program that is designed around a standard response and focus a lot, focuses a lot on just the language and the consistency in what, in what, in really how we respond. Micah and I had the opportunity in November, we were able to go down to a national symposium. We both were recognized as certified, I love you guys, I love you guys trainers. I don't see Micah's certificate up in his office like mine, but he holds the same, he owns, he owns the same prestige as I do.
It's behind all my others.
Good response. Well done. So two years ago, our focus was just language. We wanted to move away from the lock-in lockdown. So our focus was really centered around, do our safety plans have lockdown, secure, hold and evacuation? And those were really the focuses of last year. As we started to get comfortable with it, we had a couple of buildings that were ready to kind of progress in the I Love You Guys training and get their staff trained. Our goal was to be by this year, all buildings trained in the I Love You Guys program. We have a great relationship with the Montana Safe School Center. Tammy Tollefson knee, along with trustee Hayes have been great resources for us as a district. Tammy has gotten to every building in the district and has helped provided either in partnership, collaboration, or she's provided the training for staff. We've also trained our entire administrative cabinet team as well in the program. And then we updated all of our language in our safety crisis plan. The other pieces that we really put in this year, and you'll see it up there, is our Safer Montana tip line. So when we talk about communication, when we talk about reporting concerning behavior or situations, we added the Safer Montana tip line across the district. I'm sure all of you as trustees saw various blackboard messaging that went out, talking about what is the tip line? How is it used? How do I know, how do I report a concerning behavior? A concerning behavior could be anything from potentially bullying on a bus to a student that made a threat. And so what that process looks like is we have a system that will take a report, it will vet it, and then it will distribute it out to the specific building that it's relevant to. So if it was a report that was, let's say for instance, bullying at a middle school, whatever middle school was identified in the report, they would get the report along with Micah and I. And then we would be able to quickly triage, what is the intensity? What is the need to respond to that report? And then our intervention based off of that would follow. We've had up to yesterday, we've had almost 40 reports during the school year. 30% of those revolve around two incidents. So we had a lot of questions before we rolled out the Safer Tip Line. Super valid. Like is this going to exhaust our systems? Are we going to get reports every day? Are there going to be a lot of false reports? And we really haven't seen any of that. It's been really another great way we recognize for all of our families, whether it's barriers, whether it's challenges, whether they don't want to cite their name and they want it to be anonymous. This has been another great way for families or students to report and know that we're going to respond. Any questions around I Love You Guys or Safer Montana? Okay. So really as you look at this slide and as Micah goes to the next, it's really built out of the, out of the FEMA that we talk about prepare, prevent, respond and recover. And so you can see these different interventions as we go. Our real focus as a group this year has been five areas that we want to address as a district. I'm not going to share those in a public venue. I can send them out to you as trustees. Part of that is just confidentiality and making sure that we keep some of this stuff to our buildings and to you as trustees and we don't share it with the greater public. One example that we felt safe to give everyone is having a unified main entrance that's visible, that our signage points to one area to come in the building and all exterior doors shut and nothing is propped. If a, if a door is propped, there needs to be an adult there supervising so that it can be shut once somebody is going in and out. So that's just one example of the five areas that we've been focused on the last 12 months. We talked about SRO support for our buildings. We talked about making sure that we're doing our drills. You'll look on the last slide here in a minute. We're required to have eight drills a year. Those drills need to be in a variety of different drills, not just one, different times a day, different points, different scenarios. For us around our facility and safety, you've heard Burley discuss in the past, our safety levy. We talk often about our facility upgrades, cameras, surveillance, our behavioral interventionists, all those pieces are a part of the larger process to keep our building safe. And then our building and facility audit. So we have a district safety team that meets every other week. In that district safety team, we talk about the specific issues that we're seeing. What are the reports that we're hearing from our district safety team? What are, what's feedback that we're getting from our administrators? And then what's our response to that? One of the areas, and trustee Hayes mentioned it as well, is what does a building and facility audit look like? That's a set of questions that we're looking for as we go to buildings and assess where are they at around safety? Did we go to a building without any identification and no one said anything? Did we go to a building and someone let us in a side door? Did we go to a building and four doors in the back were propped? And it's not meant to be in a gotcha and discipline or, you know, shame. It's meant to help all of us be aware and mindful of what our facilities look like and how we can work together to keep them as safe as possible. So we've been able to get to almost every building this year. That's another new step that we've added in our progression around just general safety. And we'll debrief those next district safety meeting tomorrow. And I know our group can't wait for that. So. Burley, anything that I missed on the district side or the buildings that you'd like to add? Okay. The last piece to it is communication. We know that in any of our standard responses, communication is everything. We talk a lot about it as a cabinet team. Trustee Hayes mentioned it on here as well in her questions. When we get a crisis and we need to start communicating to families, first and foremost, we want to make sure that we communicate accurate information. It's really hard because we know our students have cell phones. We know that our students, they hear different information. And all of a sudden you have the game of the rumor mill that's reporting things that may not be accurate. So we try to address what is the information we know? What is local law enforcement communicating with us? What standard response did we go into? And then our goal is every 15 minutes to give families an update. Now, the update may be we don't have any more information. We're still in secure. We're waiting for more information. Or, or our next will be we've got some more information from police. This is where we're at. It could be reunification. It could be that the response is lifted. It could be that we moved from a secure into a lockdown. But we really try to live by that 15 minutes as best we can because we know the angst that our families are feeling when they get a message that their kiddo is under a standard crisis response in their building. I would say the second piece to that is we also have a safer, we have a safe schools. I think it's now just safeschools.org address. We include that in the initial message. And we'll actually start getting emails from families on that. And we have a team that responds to those in real time. It could be just, hey, please refer to our, our Missoula Police Department Facebook. It could be here's our link and we're in a secure, this is what secure means. And we probably on a regular basis get five to 10 emails every time a building goes into a response. But it's another way outside of Safer Montana that we can get some stuff out to families quickly, but most important accurately. The last piece to the, yes.
Can I talk to that just a little bit?
Absolutely.
And, and just so trustees know, the ultimate say on what is communicated and when and how is my decision. It is not at the whim of, I saw something on social media. I, we are not going to report out inaccurate information. And sometimes it's hard. I'm here and something's going on all the way at Big Sky High School or somewhere else. My eyes aren't actually on scene. And I also have to give our responders, which include our administrators and whoever else that may be, the opportunity to respond to something. But it can be as quick as that. There's a car accident over at Bancroft, right here next to Sentinel. It happens about once a week. Emergency responders show up and suddenly we're, we're having to send out these emails and communications about, well, it's nothing going on at the school. It's unrelated. I have, I have no other information. So it's, it can be as mundane as that. But really from a very legal perspective and a very much a safeguarding of the district and our, our interests, we are not sharing out information that does not need to be shared and we are not going to, to do it prematurely. So that may, that really does make people upset. I get it. And they might, they might hear something else, but at the end of the day, that is the response from the district and from me. And so if I'm saying to Benny, Benny, this is what we're saying or how we're saying it, then that's what it is. And if you get complaints from people in the community, you can direct them to me. I'd be happy to talk to them about that. But it's just, that is the reality of it. And we're a large community. We're spread out over multiple square miles. Lots of different things happening all the time. But it could be something as simple as, you know, a student had a, you know, fell down the stairs and broke their leg. And so suddenly EMS is there. the stairs and broke their leg, and so suddenly EMS is there, or other things happen and emergency services are called and responding to. I remember last year, a transformer, electrical transformer exploded in the vicinity of Washington Middle School. But it, you know, it generated a police response, like you thought, you know, something really bad was happening. We didn't know, but people were expecting this communication from us, and until we knew what the information was that we had, we couldn't share it.
I think it's really important to mention that, Micah, the other piece I would mention in a conversation that we have a lot with our staff, and our community and our parents, and it's a really healthy conversation, is about, when do you determine what response is appropriate? I think we always, and what the research would tell you and national directors would tell you around any of these responses, is you lean on your law enforcement as well. And so we're constantly having that conversation between us as a district safety team, our police department, our SROs, and then the information that we have. And we always want to respond on the correct information, not making assumptions or guesses, but what do we know and then what is the most appropriate response? Where we have focused most, and I can let Burley interject as well here, is, I would think for us as a district, the word you've heard a lot tonight is preventative. We've spent a lot of time around professional development with our staff. So what that looks like is, we meet four times a year in this building. We have all of our administrators from all of our buildings, our district safety team, our cabinet, and we go through crisis scenarios together. We do them once every quarter. They could range from a natural disaster to a fire scenario to, I like to tell Mike, our last one was a little bit of version of Die Hard 2, where it was a natural disaster into a evacuation because of a potential threat. And so, we go through these scenarios with our staff, and what we want to do is to train our staff and to train our administrators and our teachers, educators, everybody in the building, is how do we respond and think on our feet? Oftentimes, what best plan is there is not what happens. And what happens is a scenario that no one prepped for, but it was a staff that was comfortable thinking on their feet, and most importantly, making a response that was most appropriate for the kids and trying to keep the kids safe. And so we've really spent a lot of time on being comfortable, being uncomfortable. We always in this world want to have like the black and white answer, and it doesn't exist. There's a lot of times where we just have to think of, what is the best recourse right now for our students to be the most safe? And we'll deal with everything else after that. And so I've been really proud of our administrators that they've been able to go through that, and we've all kind of trained ourselves to think outside the box. What that looks like at a building level is, once we have a training, they'll go back to their building, and they'll have their crisis teams convene, they'll go over the slide deck, they'll make it fit their building, and then they'll start having trainings with their staff. And so you can see how that trickles down, and we really try to have consistent responses all the way through. Is it perfect? It's not. But we really take pride on making this a priority for us as a district. The conversations that I have most with families are around safety, and families wanting to know that when they let their little kid go, or they see their oldest son leaving the car, that they're safe in their building. And that people, and most importantly, the adults in the building, know how to respond if, gosh forbid, there's some unforeseen circumstance or something scary. Do we know how to respond? Are we not going to panic? Are we going to remain calm? And do we have best plans to keep our kiddos safe?
I just have a couple of questions. I'm wondering if in the team, if you've ever considered having parents on that committee in the scenario, just to provide that, here's how parents will probably respond.
Yep. I think it's a great question. I think what we'd probably do is maybe create a community one, where we could get a lot of different voices in the room. Sometimes the conversations we have in there, we want to protect and keep pretty private just because of the safety of our buildings. But I think, we've had some pretty successful community nights, where we've had other conversations, the bell schedule, other things where we've had a really good turnout. I think it's a great idea.
Cool. Thanks. And then, have you looked into technological solutions around safety and some of the emerging, like, social media crawlers and things like that?
Yeah, Burley, do you want to talk just a little bit about, I'll get into that, but just in general, some of the presentations we've seen, some of the conversations around surveillance, cameras, and technology? And Brian, I don't know if you want to add as well, just some of the stuff on your layers too?
Yeah, I'll do technology part. No, you know, years, almost, gosh, about 10, 12 years ago, this is just kind of going in the weeds a little bit for history, but pretty much right after Sandy Hook, we created three different safety committees. We created a facility safety committee, a personal safety committee, and then at the time was kind of like a mental wellness safety committee. And over the course of probably a year, they kind of melded into one, which included committee members, law enforcement, fire department, EMTs, doctors, nurses. I mean, it was, they were gigantic committees, bigger than normal. And it shrunk, and we kind of put it into one committee, and then it kind of fell right into the pre-bond work on what we wanted to do from a facility safety improvements, technology, being a lot of that. And so, what's so great about that is, it's really, if you look back at what that committee came up with, we've done a lot of that, and we've been able to really be really successful in that. It's kind of neat to see that transition, but with all that, all the buildings, none of the buildings before had any sort of car key access to get into buildings, no way to monitor who did not have our buildings that way, no camera systems, and we have different systems within our buildings where we can push buttons and get intercom conversations two-way with the main office if there's an emergency. So there's a lot of different things we've done to kind of help people in our buildings handle emergency situations, and start that communication process really quickly, rather than having to send someone to the office or to get someone to a phone. And so, those are, the downside of those systems are, is, it's kind of like giving candy to a baby, you know, they want more. And so you can't, how many cameras is enough cameras? The answer is never enough. You know, how many, how much technology can you throw at it? And Brian will probably admit, nobody, there's never enough technology. It's what we rely so much on these days, so. But it's really neat to see it evolve. Cameras and other technologies have changed over that 10-year period. We've seen it, our first camera systems went in the buildings in 2016, well, 17, and we're already kind of seeing, luckily, we have systems that can do remote, can get updates. But you're starting to see even technologies advance beyond that, and so, and we have some pretty good systems. So I don't know if that answered your questions.
Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about, yep, the technology side?
Yeah, sure. We'll go ahead and...
Brian, if you'll talk about the programming aspect too?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'll touch first on your question specifically, as far as crawlers. We don't use specific crawlers, but we do monitor for social activity and do bring that to the school's attention when we find that. Some of that stuff is kind of hard, because there's not a lot, and most of it's anonymous, and there's not a lot that we can do with those accounts, but just bringing it to light. The programming on, what was it?
Yeah, so the crawler is a good example. I guess I'm also wondering about camera systems that use, like, learned language models that are visual models, that can like see a gun and alert you if there's a gun in the school.
Right, so, yeah, and that's where most schools are heading, and that's what we're looking at doing now. So as our camera systems become a little bit more outdated and need to be updated, we're looking at, most of them have facial recognition, facial trackers, cloud-based services, where they use those kind of AI elements to catch some more stuff like that, and then track certain people throughout the building and things like that. So giving us a lot more control over those systems and what we can do with them, you know.
Just the last slide, and any other questions that the board has? These are pretty self-explanatory, but we thought it would be nice for you to see some of the policy, some of the state language that helps guide us, and some of the guardrails that we use in terms of all things safety, how we address safety in our buildings, what we're doing as a district, and how we're making sure that we're compliant with the state and that we're meeting the expectations of the board. But feel free to look through those, and if you have questions down the road, more than welcome to email any of our team.
One of the other things on the technology side, and we are inundated with companies trying to sell us the next greatest thing, the app, the, you know, this thing will scan for guns, and this thing will scan for bombs, and this, and part of it is, they're coming to us and asking, and at great cost, right? Like, we're talking like 10 bucks a kid type of thing, and 10,000 kids, it's like, that's a $100,000 program. And it's like, yeah, but don't you feel safer having this app on your phone? Or now you've got another system to manage, or you've got to put more FTE into a system to make sure that it works, and you have to make sure that it's going to get the updates, and it's going to, that everything syncs and works. And so, we deal a lot with that. And so part of our job is somewhat to resist a little bit on that end, because it's preying on our fears, right? Our worst fears, and if we have this, and the reality is, is when these incidents happen and these other schools that have had these things happen, they have secure door systems, they have apps, they have all these things. It still doesn't take away the ability for someone to be able to do something. What you're trying to do is train the adults, not the technology, to react in the most, in the manner that will reduce the greatest amount of harm to kids and other staff. That is the priority for us when we start looking at these things.
This is sort of maybe just an anecdotal and emotional question, but it goes off of the adults. Maybe my own life, but also some events that have happened at some of our middle schools. I guess I've just gotten a sense over the past few years that there were not enough adults on the playground, and some things happened that you think wouldn't happen if there were adults. Like, I can't imagine there was an adult there and let it happen, so then I have to think that it's a lack of resources of having staff and or funding to have adults on the playground. And so I guess if that improved any, and then my second question, which is the objective question, is, so next year we do this again, what's our metric over whether we're better or worse? Like, what, this is all good, everyone's trying really hard, but like, what are we, how do we tell if we're going in the right direction?
Yeah, it's great questions, Trustee Mercer. I think some of the, in the weeds that we could have gotten to in the conversation that we have, is what is some of the data points that we look at, right? So, we could look to, we track how many threat assessments do we have in a year? We track how many suicide screeners do we do in a year? We track how many crisis response do we have as a district in a year? We have ODR data that we would be able to attract, that would be able to tell us, majors and minors. We gave a reference to citations from the police. There's a lot of different things that we can share, and that would be the hope over time. I thought you asked a great question to Barbara. I'm as excited as anybody to see, what does our survey data tell us next year, right? To be able to look at another example. And that's, I think that'll be a good challenge for us to come back here in a year and say, we're another year in, we can look at five years, we can look at last year, and continue that conversation, but I think it's an important one, and we need to do that for sure. The other question around supervision, I would say, and cautious, cautious, caution? Caution?
I'm not sure what you're...
I think caution us as a board and as a team. I wouldn't make the assumption that something happened because of a lack of adults out there. What I would say is that there's time and unfortunate incidents that happen, that I'm always proud of, and I haven't had a situation where I felt like something happened and people tried to respond as quick as they can. The reality of the acres of our buildings, the number of kids we have, the budget in which we operate from, helps, I mean, it guides a little bit of what we have and what it looks like, but we train our staff at lunch, we train our staff for recess, we do ongoing professional development, we have staff that know how to supervise, know how to make sure that they're in different areas of the building, staff and teachers that are out in hallways during passing periods, out before recess, out before school, after school. I do think, when you're operating with 9,200 kids, you're going to have some scenarios that happen at times that you learn from, that you try to help build within your buildings and as a district. But I wouldn't say any of those scenarios were a lack of, but just areas that were unfortunate.
I guess I respectfully disagree.
I have a, I love the idea of a community night. I think it would be really helpful for the community to also like meet an SRO. In talking with folks last year trying to pass those levies, when people weren't going to pass a safety levy, and I asked, oh, well, tell me more about that. You know, most of those voters have never had an SRO in their classroom, and their imagined SRO experience would be this like militant police officer walking through the hallways, and they were like, oh, I don't want our kids growing up around that. So, just to reiterate, SROs are these friendly people that are supportive and very welcomed into the school, but it might be nice to somehow have a little more face time with them.
Yeah, we've talked about it a ton, and I think they would say the same thing. Part of the challenge has been the last couple of years in consistent hiring, especially for the rotating positions. High schools have been more consistent. We have one rotating SRO that I think is the best SRO of all time, and we've been consistent with that one position, but the second one not as much. So that, that position has been, she's been asked to do a lot, and so getting her some face time and getting her to be able to have that has been a challenge, but we've talked a lot about, and Amy alluded to it, our SROs getting out to events. We had one dancing at the GOAT game a couple weeks ago. You know, they try to get to events, they try to make sure they're at assemblies, but any feedback that you have as a team, Lisa mentioned too, like, what does a community night look like? Could we bring them in an evening there? Are there other ways that we can celebrate their role and what they do? I think it's a great idea.
Or, you know, we always have the students here, and they have such great social media accounts for all of the high schools. It would be nice, we got to tell them, like, get your SROs up. That's, and then we're not using more time.
As a parent of a high schooler, I know my high school SRO pretty well, and I think that's really important to, for parents to really connect with who the SRO is as well.
I don't know if there's other questions and comments, but I want to summarize a little bit about what you heard tonight. And I want to start by saying first, thank you to my team, who, when you listen to them and the depth of knowledge that they have in and around these subjects is pretty spectacular, and a very caring group of individuals, and so, thank you. But also recognize that I don't think any of them came to education thinking that this was what they would be doing for their career, or that our teachers are coming into their classrooms going, okay, wait a minute, you want me to teach them how to read and write and do math and all these other things, but you also expect me to be able to respond to any scenario or situation? You expect me to protect these kids? You expect me to make sure that they aren't suicidal? You're expecting me to, the expectations placed on our staff, and you look at this multi-tiered systems of support and what it takes to operate a school district day in and day out, and the things that happen in our classrooms and our buildings, and the things that happen on a playground or whatever else. Most of our educators did not come into this to be doing that. They said, oh, I want to teach content, I want to teach social studies, I want to teach math, I want to teach the things I'm really passionate about, and we placed a huge expectation and burden. And then you look at this, and you think like, through the totality of all of this, how much resource in terms of time and energy is spent on these things just so that we can teach kids how to read and write and do math? It's incredible. And I think there's a lot of acknowledgement for not only the administrators here, but our building principals who are sitting there day in and day out in their buildings, having to deal with these things, with these behaviors, with these kids. If I think a quarter of my kids are somewhere between tier two and tier three every day, and I am putting out fires, and, oh, by the way, there's an expectation that my kids are, their test scores are supposed to go up, and that, you know, these other things are supposed to happen, and we're on top of that, we're dealing with learning disabilities, and we're dealing with behavior, and, I mean, it's just like, you think about the totality of it all, and it's a lot. And so I appreciate the time that went into helping our board understand a little bit more about what's going on, but it also should create like a little bit of empathy too, for what happens day in and day out. And we don't always get it right. I'll be the first one to say it. I don't get it right all the time, and we don't, but we're always learning and we're trying to improve and be better every day. And we try and set up these systems from a district level, right down to what happens, you know, with five minutes before the bell rings at the end of a class, and how we're going to take care of these kids. And so, just thank you for indulging us tonight and your great questions. There can certainly be more, and if there's additional feedback for us in terms of what you'd like to see if we were to present again next year, we would like to do that. Thanks.
I just want to say one thing, piggybacking what you said, Micah, is, you speak about resources in our people, which is the most important resource, but I also want to speak to the fact of the financial resource of this. When our school financing model was set up years ago, none of this stuff was needed. When our school financing model was set up years ago, none of this stuff was needed. So, we've taken out of general budgets, and we talked about this when we talked about the levies last year. We've taken out of general budgets that should go to art teachers, more teachers in the classrooms, those sort of things. We've taken away from those resources to add these sort of things, behavior interventionists, social workers. Those are things that, they're important. We do it because it's the right thing to do for the school district. But those are things that take away from the original model of what we do, which is educating students. So, as our community thinks about future possible safety levies, this is the sort of thing that we're talking about. These are the sort of resources. And these are the sort of things, Cohen, you brought up earlier, if we passed a high school safety levy, you know, what would we add? Well, in a lot of cases, we would add some stuff. Probably, technology would be one thing, maybe some people. But probably, what we would do is add back to our schools in places that we've taken away because the resources that should be for safety should go back to our schools. So, something to think about when we're talking about resources. It's the people is our most important resource, but there's a financial resource there that it strains us.
In case anyone's listening, let me just double down on that. You want more teachers, then you need to fund SROs because right now, SROs are being paid out of general funds, which would go to pay teachers. I mean, it's that, like, it just moves like that. So, whether you, and there are parts of Missoula that maybe disagree with SROs, but whether you do personally or not, if you support teachers, and we are going to have SROs, which I think the majority of the board and the district is in favor of, but maybe not all, but the majority, then you need to fund them out of a safety levy so you can free up that money in general fund to have teachers. And like, that's how the eggs roll in the Montana's education funding system.
All right. Any other final comments? I want to give a shout out to Monica, my SRO for Sentinel High School. Sorry. He's really good with our kiddos there. Any public comment? Seeing and the time is now 8:12, and we are adjourned. Thank you, guys, and thank you, everybody.